...council to order, and we'll start with a roll call, please.
Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Feller is joining us via Zoom, and he is here. Councilmember Keim.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
And we'll start with the invocation.
Today, we have an invocation, the first invocation is going to be from Father Ray Evangelista of Saint Mary's Star of the Sea. So Father Ray, whenever you're ready.
He's muted.
Father Ray, you are muted. There you go. You can begin.
Okay. This is the day the Lord has made. Let us rejoice and glad in it. Let you witness the inauguration of the elected municipality of people at the city of Oceanside, California, and welcome to our celebration. Hoy seremos hijos de la toma de posesión de nuestros hijos municipales recién heridos de la ciudad de Oceanside, California. Bienvenidos a nuestra celebración. Por primera vez tenemos la alcaldesa latina con un gran don para servir a nuestra ciudad, también a los nuevos concejales. Muy bienestar al hijo señor de la heart, atuak. Y un araro de todo, atuak uai, atuak palak. Dahil Dios ama y kapakal, kay nagbigay saatin na mga mahuti at mga bagong kala na mga oficialis na ating ciudad. Now is time to pause for a moment for self, the presence of the Lord. Let us ask for his blessings and blessings. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Almighty and eternal God, you reveal your glory to all nations. God of power, light, wisdom, and justice. For you authority is rightly administered. Laws are enacted. Judgment is decreed. We pray for the new mayor, Esther Sanchez, also for the members of the city council. Were trusted, guard our political welfare. If they be enabled by your powerful protection, discharge their duties with honesty and loyalty. Let the light of your wisdom be upon them. May they seek to preserve peace, promote harmony, happiness, and continue to bring us the blessings of purity and equality. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Our next invocation is from Pastor Faguatua Tealee of Grace Full Gospel Ministries.
Le vega le tuan nei taya wa fata lo fatu le our new elected mayor, Esther Sanchez. Le nga fatai yo lewa mowala wano e fai ona afat shei owa le olenu fow tatu nuu Oceanside. Ya fata lo fatu le pa iho samoa i ka le shefia o ona to fe le tuan ma to fatuwa. Me tofo ya tuu ma tumali o tuat nuu. Ya olaas o lewa nas fatuwa. O lewa ma tu ma futa noa lao o samia ye olenu fai ma futa be ma se nyai. Ya ota tu olenu fow lewa ma tu o fin finia. Laas o lewa afapenan fa pa iye fai ma ku nuu tatu nuu Oceanside. Ah, le momia tatu nga duet fatas. Tu fatas ya wata tuino tatu nuu. Ya maniye me umalaba. Ah, I'm very pleased to be here today and be part of this celebration and for swearing of our elected mayor as a mayor of a city of Oceanside. We pray that that God will continue to watch over our city. You cannot do it all by yourself, Mayor. Any council can't do it all by yourself. But we pray that our community will come together. A word for us today that fathers that do not lead on our own understanding, but all our ways submitted to the Lord, and he will direct. There are times that are hard decisions to make. You can face some hard decisions to make, but we pray that God will uphold you, give you the wisdom, understanding, as we know what your duties and whatever you can face, along with our city councils and all the officials in our city. We also lift up our police department, and we pray that our community will come together. Ah, biyaue taman nei taya ma tu te nga fatai wana wano mowa. Ma tu fatas shei le le iye owa laso nei fatuwa. Ya fai ona fa pi ai le maya fow wa tulai maya, Esther Sanchez. E fai ma olenu fow le tatu nuu. Ya ta palak le tuai fa pi na fa myanga fa pa iya tatu maya. Fa pa iya olaas o le. Ya fow i le o lewa amai se la tu uma. Ya fa iya fow tatu nuu Oceanside. Mo la tu le ngai. Ta tu fatas ya ma tatu ina tatu muwet fe le muu. Ya swa fa iye su. Amen.
And our final invocation today is going to be from Pastor Sheldon Brown of Cause of Christ Ministries.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. Lord, we lift up this your name, your glorious name for this day. Father God, there's so much to be grateful for. We're grateful, the Lord, that we have this opportunity to pray for our elected officials, for the mayor, the Lord, for the council members, for the city of Oceanside. Lord, let us be obedient unto you, first and foremost. And Lord, let us continue to seek you of all our heart, mind, soul, and spirit. Lord, let us be led by the Spirit, not by the flesh. Bless this city, Father God, as we continue to pray for the city, as we continue to work together in this city to bring about a positive change, the change that you desire. And Lord, we ask, help us to get along, to work together, not work separately, but working together to bring this city to a place, Father, where your name is glorified and magnified. We thank you, the Lord, for each and every person, Father God, that has been selected and brought into these offices. But Lord, we know it was from your hand, and your hand alone. And we thank you, God, that they would give you all the glory, honor, and praise as we're giving you glory right now as well. In your name be praised for now and forever, Lord, in Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. And please remain standing for the national anthems with a special performance from Ms. Laura Williams. And Ms. Williams, are you ready? We're getting you on the line. All right, you're good. All right. Whenever you're ready.
I'm muted. This is too bad. She's a great singer.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. We had some audio difficulties on, I think it was on your end, but I'm pretty sure it was a lovely, lovely performance. Thank you very much. And please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mayor Weiss?
Ready to begin? My pledge of allegiance is inspired by the United States of America. The people who are forged in Spain. With that, we'll go to item number one on the agenda, which is adoption of a resolution certifying the election results.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, before you today is an adoption of a resolution certifying the results of the city's general municipal election held on Tuesday, November 3rd. In accordance with California Elections Code, staff recommends that the city council adopt this resolution declaring the results of the general election that was held on Tuesday, November 3rd, and swearing the newly elected officials. Based on the results of the registrar of voters has provided, the following candidates were elected to the following offices. For the office of mayor, Esther C. Sanchez was elected with 29.38% of the at-large vote. For a member of the city council District 3, Ryan Keim, was elected with 38.22% of the District 3 vote. For a member of the city council District 4, Peter Weiss, was elected with 45.15% of the District 4 vote. For the office city clerk, Zeb Navarro, was elected with 64.20% of the at-large vote. And for the office of city treasurer, Victor Roy, was elected with 100% of the vote. And we'd also like to thank the following candidates as well for participating. We'd like to thank Perry Alvarez, David Joseph Turgeon, Fernando Garcia, Rob Howard, Fabio Marchi, Ruben Major, Alva McGee, Jack Feller, Rocky Chavez, Lou Uridell, Christopher Rodriguez, candidates for mayor. The candidates for District 3, Bill Bachelor, David Zernick, Amber Newman, Sherri Mackin, Kelly Davis. Candidates for District 4, Michelle Gomez, Jane Marshall, Morgan McCray, and candidate for city clerk Laura Richardson-Basset. And we'd like to thank them for participating in the democratic process. And campaigning is very hard, so I just wanted to publicly acknowledge the other candidates today as well. Also on the ballot on November 3rd were three ballot measures that the city put on the ballot and also through the referendum process. Based on the results the registrar of voters has provided, the following facts are declared. Measure K passed by a majority vote. Measure L did not pass by a majority vote. And measure M passed by a majority vote. So staff recommends that in accordance with California Election Code, that the council adopt a resolution declaring the results of the city's general municipal election held on Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020, and to swear in the newly elected officials. I am available, and staff is available with any questions you may have. And also, we have, we do have one public speaker on this item. So our first public speaker, and only one on this one, is going to be Diane Nygaard. And then we're getting her ready, and then... Let me see, is she ready?
Yep. She's on. Oh.
All right. Are you on?
She's on. She's unmuted.
All right. Diane, you are unmuted, so whenever you're ready to go.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Honorable Mayor and Council. Elections are certainly one of the cornerstones of our democracy, and we can all be thankful we live in a country, state, and county where the integrity of elections are assured. Yet much of the world describes us as the best democracy that money can buy. Two of our local elections are particularly noteworthy exceptions to that. Measure L was soundly defeated. The voice of the people prevailed over $2 million developer disinformation campaign. And Esther Sanchez is our new mayor. In a huge field with a huge amount of special interest money, she prevailed. She prevailed without developer dollars. Esther is from the community and is committed to represent the community. I feel the spirit of her parents here today, so proud of what she has accomplished. And we should all take pride in what this means for Oceanside. Let us all commit to support this new team and to all work together for our community. Thank you.
Concludes the public comment.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, and I believe we had one of the highest turnout, voter turnout in recent history, and this was during a time when COVID was really very scary, you know. Across the country in Oceanside, we had this challenge. Do we exercise this constitutional right of the right to vote? Or do we stay home? And because we were able to do this via social distancing and with the registrar of voters making it easier to vote by having the polls open for four days, and also everyone getting a ballot via the mail. This made it easier for us to exercise this very, very critical right that we all have. And so it's an honor to move that we adopt the resolution that we had three, for the, I think that's the first time we've had three items on the ballot, along with our council members and new council members. And Mayor, thank you.
Council.
I'm sorry. And also Victor and our city treasurer and city clerk. Thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you. First and foremost, I want to congratulate the candidates, and this is an amazing day of celebration in moving our city into this next chapter. I do want to point out that our estimated cost for this last election is $675,000. The funding account currently only has $400,000, and we're going to need to appropriate $275,000 from our general fund unassigned, so, which means our account is short. So we're having to spend over a quarter million dollars to to fund this election. And so when considering some future decisions with respect to a special election that we've been hearing from a lot of constituents, please understand that elections are not cheap, and they are costing you precious tax dollars in moving things forward. I would also like to point out and make a comment and plant the seed. Now that we have moved to district elections and we have, and we will maintain the citywide mayoral vote every four years, I've been approached by numerous constituents on how is it that so many candidates can run for mayor? And why does the city of Oceanside not have a primary? And in looking at the history of Oceanside, in order to have a primary so that the mayor of our city can have the majority support by its constituents, there must be a primary. But that requires a charter amendment. And in order to have a charter amendment, we need to get it put on the ballot. And so I want to plant the seed now for the future of our city and for the future mayors of our city to have the majority support of the constituency. I think that's healthy. I think that's fair. And I think that's in the best interest of our city. So I will definitely be bringing that up into the coming year as a potential council, potential ballot measure for the city to make a charter amendment to allow a primary for the mayoral election. And I would like to second Councilmember Sanchez's motion.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Deputy Mayor Feller, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion approved. Five oh.
With that, we'll go to item two, which is the swearing in of the newly elected officials.
So our first elected official to be sworn in is our city treasurer Victor Roy, who has requested our mayor-elect Esther Sanchez to swear him in. So City Treasurer Roy, if you could get to the center there. And Mayor-elect Sanchez will administer the oath of office.
Well, it's a great honor to be doing this. I am, I've known you for a long time, Victor, and you have really been a great, great member of our community in how much you care. And so with that, please repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear
Aye, Victor Roy, solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution
And the Constitution.
Excuse me. Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Do we have a second?
We'll go.
Is it okay to hand him mine?
No, there's no.
Can I hand him mine now?
Yeah, you can hand him yours.
I'm going to hand you.
Okay.
I'm going to hand him, starting hand, please.
Okay.
I state your name.
I, Victor Roy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of California.
Of the state of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faith.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the, of the office of.
City treasurer.
City treasurer.
Of the city of Oceanside.
Of the city of Oceanside.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, Victor.
Thank you.
Okay now.
So on behalf of the city clerk's office, we'd like to present you with this certificate of election for the office of city treasurer for four years, a full four-year term. So Victor, we'll have remarks after we're done with everybody, so congratulations again.
Thank you.
Thank you. So up next to be sworn in is the city clerk, me. And I have asked our acting assistant city clerk and records manager, Thomas Schmittler, to swear me in. So Thomas, if you'll be get over there. Yes. I, Zeb Navarro.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will, that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties of the office of the city clerk.
Discharge the duties of the office of the city clerk.
Of the city of Oceanside.
Of the city of Oceanside.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Get a shot for K O C T. All right. And up next to be sworn in is our councilmember-elect for District 4, Mr. Peter Weiss.
I, Peter Weiss.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or a purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of, member of the city council District 4.
Of the office of, member of city council District 4.
Of the city of Oceanside.
Of the city of Oceanside.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Get a shot for K O C T.
Congratulations, sir.
And up next to be sworn in is our councilmember-elect for District 3, Mr. Ryan Keim. All right, Ryan.
That's for you. Can you please raise your right hand?
I, Ryan Keim. I, Ryan Keim. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the state of California. And the Constitution of the state of California. Against all enemies. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. Foreign and domestic. That I will, that I will, that I will bear true faith. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. And allegiance. The Constitution of the United States. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the state of California. And the Constitution of the state of California. That I take this obligation freely. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. Or a purpose of evasion. That I will well, that I will well and faithfully. That I will well and faithfully. Discharge the duties. Discharge the duties. Of the office of, member of the city council District 3. Of the office of, member of the city council District 3. Of the city of Oceanside. Of the city of Oceanside. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability. Thank you very much.
K O C T there. And do we have Congressman Levin on the line? And the final person to be sworn in is our mayor-elect, Esther Sanchez. And she will be sworn in by our special guest Congressman Mike Levin, who will be joining us by Zoom. And we just need to put him on the big screen.
Can you hear me?
He can hear you, but we're trying to see you at the same time as well, so.
All right.
All right.
Well, greetings from Washington, DC. Are you ready for me? Are we ready?
Yes.
All right. Please raise your right hand, Esther. Repeat after me. I, Esther C. Sanchez, do solemnly swear.
I, Esther C. Sanchez, do solemnly swear.
That I will solemnly swear. That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties of the Office of Mayor.
Discharge the duties of the Office of Mayor.
Of the City of Oceanside.
The City of Oceanside.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Esther.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike, for being here.
Thank you. Well, it was my great honor to get to swear in Mayor Esther C. Sanchez as the first female, first Latina mayor in the history of the City of Oceanside. And I have to tell you, as the grandson myself of Mexican immigrants on my mom's side, I know how important it is to see people with their own background and experiences in meaningful positions. And in Mayor Sanchez, and that sounds great, doesn't it? In Mayor Sanchez, little girls and boys in the City of Oceanside and beyond are going to be able to recognize someone in a position to make meaningful change. And I know that Mayor Sanchez will do just that. I congratulate her on this historic achievement. I look forward to working together on behalf of our constituents throughout the City of Oceanside. And I also congratulate my friends, Councilmember Peter Weiss and Deputy Mayor Ryan Keim, on being sworn in to another term on the council. And I also want to thank former Councilmember Jack Feller for his years of service to the city and to our community. I know that Oceanside is going to continue to thrive under the leadership of Mayor Sanchez and this city council, and I look forward to working with you all in the months and years ahead. Thanks, and again, congratulations, everybody.
Thank you, thank you. Got it. And we have public comment. Thank you.
And we do have public comment on this item. And our first public comment is from the Honorable Alejandra Sotelo Solis, Mayor of National City. And we'll get her on the line here.
Mayor Sotelo Solis is here. Can you hear me?
We can. I apologize for mispronouncing your last name. All right. Whenever you're ready.
Thank you so much. I want to congratulate my friend, the newly sworn-in Alcaldesa, Ms. Esther Sanchez. I'm so proud of you. Welcome to the Latina Mayor's Club. We know that you've done so much work as a council member. We know that you will continue to lift the voices of our working-class communities, to bring equity when it comes to opportunities for employment, housing, and transportation. Just so proud of you. And to Congressman Levin, good to hear your voice. Thank you for all you're doing in D.C. We look forward to, you know, having Congress pass the Last Cares Act support money for our nation, but that's an aside. To the newly elected members of the city council, congratulations. You have a great leader, definitely someone who is willing to work across the aisle and to have continued dialogue, because that's what it means to be a mayor, to have the dialogue, to be part of the conversation, and to do what's best for the greater good. So felicidades, Alcaldesa, Mayor Sanchez, congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
And our next speaker is Jane Marshall. And we're going to get you on the line, Jane.
Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I just wanted to congratulate Esther Sanchez, the first mayor, of course, historically, a first woman in Latina mayor of Oceanside. And, you know, this is a great representation of our diverse community of residents, businesses, and visitors as well. I also want to congratulate the other candidates, Councilman Weiss, Keim, certainly Victor and Zeb for your wins. And then also, I just want to make sure that, you know, this is a great opportunity, 2021, hindsight and, you know, looking into the future. Let's put all these personal agendas aside and really work with the community. I know that we've tried in the past, but different personal agendas has really made a mess of things. And as demonstrated the huge success of the measures, K, to keep our elected clerk and treasurer, as well as the defeat of L, that the community wants to save the last agricultural resources in Oceanside, that the citizens want to work together with the city council. And I really, really encourage everyone to work together with the community to make Oceanside the best it can be. And with that, I'd like to wish everyone a happy holiday and the very, very best for 2021. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Linda Slater. Whenever you're ready, Linda.
Hi. Greetings from Oceana, and congratulations to Mayor Esther Sanchez. Thank you very much for running for mayor, and we are exceedingly excited about your new role within our city. You've been a friend to seniors and to Oceana in particular, and we really appreciate that. We've been staunch supporters of yours. We will continue to be that. And I just want to say, Esther, we have your back. And I also want to echo Jane Marshall's comments. I want to congratulate Peter Weiss, our Councilmember for District Four, and Ryan Keim, Councilmember for District Three, Zeb Navarro, our City Clerk, and Victor Roy, our City Treasurer. Working together with the citizenry and listening to people is the way we can make Oceanside a much better place. So congratulations, everyone, and congratulations, Esther.
And our next public speaker is Karen Williams Graham. And please unmute yourself. There we go.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Karen Graham, and I've been a.
Oh, no.
And I want to say that I have watched a mayor come to every activity in the city, and I want to congratulate her on her office. I also want to let her know that she's a number-one hero in our city, just as Laura Williams from the Lion King movie is an original person from our city. So we have original firsts in our city. And I want to thank her in advance for coming to my new show on World Tune Radio this Sunday night at 7:00 P.M., where she's going to be reading a story to all the kids in Oceanside. So come to World Tune Radio, Ask Mama G at 7:00 P.M. Mayor, thank you for making me and our studio one of the first to have you come to our studio. Again, you have our back from World Tune Radio. Wherever you need us, we'll be there just for you. And congratulations to all of the council new people. We are looking forward to having you come on to our show. Have a wonderful day, Oceanside. This is a historic day. Goodbye.
Thank you, Karen.
And we could go on to, that concludes the public comment. And we could go on to item number three, remarks by the newly elected officials. And we'll start with our City Treasurer.
Good afternoon, Oceanside. And I know we've come through some very challenging times. We will get through this. You need to stay strong, everyone, for your neighbors, for your family and friends. It's an important task for all of us to stand up, contribute to your causes, your community, and the charities around us that need us at this most important time. I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy and Prosperous New Year. Feliz Navidad y Prospero Año Nuevo. We're looking forward to standing strong here with you in the city council chamber through the City Treasurer's office as we move forward on the progress of this great city of Oceanside that we have. Thank you for your support, your votes, and, you know, contact us whenever you need any information. I vow to keep all the city investments transparent and safe and so that the public has access. Thank you very much.
And the next public comment is from me, from newly sworn in, now-elected City Clerk. I just want to thank all my supporters that supported me during this race, a lot of people I reconnected with after 20 years. 20 years ago, I ran. I was 19 and fresh out of high school, so I didn't know what I was doing. I didn't know any better, so I ran for city council. I learned my lesson and stayed out of Oceanside politics and decided to get an education and work. But I wanted to thank everybody that reconnected after 20 years. It's like not a day has gone by. All the people that I was newly introduced this election cycle, just thank you for all your support, and mostly for my family. Unfortunately, my dad passed away two months after I was sworn in last year, so one of the last things he was able to see before he passed was me being sworn in as City Clerk. So thanks to my brothers, my sisters, my mom, for all their support and willing to go out, knock on doors, and put up signs. I would also like to thank my first city council. They say a city clerk never forgets their first city council. So thank you all for working with my office and being just great people to work with. And I look forward for the next four years, working with you on multiple issues, answering any questions that you have. Thank you to Michelle Skaggs Lawrence, who welcomed me, the first person to welcome me as a city manager, and Deanna Larson, who has a huge task on her hands with everything. I don't know how she does, I don't know when she goes to bed, when she sleeps, or if she sleeps. She's a superhero in my eyes. And also the person who I always jokingly call the hardest-working man in show business, Mr. John Mullen. Whenever I have an irritating elections code question, he's always there, picks up the phone, gives it to me straight, and then I'm good to go. So thank you, John, for all your help, and Deanna, yours as well. And finally, I'd just like to thank a couple of people who helped out an eight-year-old kid, and their names probably have not been said in this council chamber for over 30 years, but their names are on this building. So I'd like to thank Mayor Larry Bagley, Sam Williamson, Melba Bishop, Ben Ramsey, and the lady who came to my house and said, even a little kid like you can make it to City Hall. And she started my love of Oceanside politics, and since that time, I followed Oceanside politics. And she's not here, she passed away back in the '90s, but she was a hero of the East Side. So I'd publicly like to thank Ms. Lucy Chavez. Thank you. And now we will move to our District Four Councilman, Peter Weiss.
Thank you, Zeb. I'd like to first thank my wife Janet, my family, for putting up with those several months of campaigning and how hectic that actually ended up being. But I would like to thank all the people of Oceanside, particularly those in District Four, that did support my campaign and put me in this position. And, you know, part of my goal and what I ran on was continuing the economic prosperity that we've created over the past several years, and I want to make sure that does continue as we get on the other side of COVID. And I would just ask everybody that's out there that as we enter this Christmas and holiday season, that if you could please support our local businesses, shop local, support those small businesses, they're hurting right now. And I would leave you with this, you know, pray and hope, but don't worry, worry gets you nowhere, and God hears our prayers, and we will get through this, and hopefully we'll see a great 2021. Thank you.
And our next remarks are from our newly sworn in District Three Councilman, Mr. Ryan Keim.
Thank you, Zeb. I also want to thank my wife Ivy and daughter Charlotte. They also had to deal with several months of worry and planning, and they were great, and it's what's made me able to do this. I said when I was sworn in two years ago that it was the most optimistic I'd been about Oceanside. I was happy to come back in this position, and I still, with our challenges we have right now, I still feel the same way. But it's great to be able to put campaigns behind us, all of us to come together, get our businesses and residents through that, because we're in really tough times, and we need to actually do our jobs, get stuff figured out and fixed, all of us, and get through this. So thank you again for everyone who's supported me. It's been great to work with all of you, and I'm looking forward to four years.
And our next comments are from our newly sworn in Mayor Esther Sanchez.
Thank you, and I first want to start off by dedicating this race and really the years that I've, all of the years that I've had on this earth, to my folks, my mom and dad, Louis and Carolina Sanchez. My dad's family, when he was seven, decided to come to Oceanside. He was seven, that was in 1937. My mom came in 1954 to marry a man who just seemed to love the city so much. My parents were one of the first in the East Side in terms of, and there's, like, the East Side had been around since at least 1915, but one of the first in terms of, you know, going to City Hall and asking and requesting that the streets be paved, that there be a park, all of this at the call of the Chavez family. And Lucy Chavez, who ended up being on the city council, so she was actually the first Latina on the city council, and of course, Mary and also Joe. Joe was actually at the Baldurama Park, the Joe Baldurama Park, in the first building that was built, actually by my parents and my dad and all the men that were living in the East Side at the time. It has been, for me, such a journey, because we all take things for granted sometimes. And, oof, in reflecting on growing up in Oceanside, and believe me, there were 30,000 people back then. It was small-town Oceanside where you knew everyone that you went to school with, that you knew the families around you. And so it did not occur to me till much later that we were protected by our elders in the community, the Buchanan's, the Maganyas, Pete Maganya, the Godinay family, the Chavez family, the Rodriguez Sanchez. I mean, I had, especially back then, a lot of family uncles. My grandparents had seven kids, and they all lived in Oceanside, they all started in Oceanside. And so for me, it was about watching them and their purpose. There was a purpose behind everything they did. My dad, my mom started off as farmworkers. They worked really, really hard for us to be able to have a roof over our heads. My mom once didn't have that when she was growing up. And so for her, and it was about family, it was about community for both of them. So it was that strong sense of community and family, and all those elders around us. I mean, I remember Mr. Buchanan driving the bus for us. That made me feel safe and made me feel that I can do whatever it was that I could do. Ms. Eto, my second-grade teacher, saying, Mr. Sanchez, you need to start saving for college, and then believing that I was going to go to college. Mr. Clifford Roach, speech, OHS speech coach, and also, you know, Mr. Clifford Roach, speech, speech, OHS speech coach, and also, you know, the teacher, teaching me how to speak, because I couldn't even speak. I, I would get up and start shaking. So I've had so many great experiences. I've learned a lot of hard, hard lessons in life. Some may say that it's taken me 20 years to become mayor. It's actually, it's actually been a lifetime, because every experience that I've had, and I want to say besides that, Dixie and Lou Bales, Melba Bishop, Barb Markley, Victor, you've been around, you know, I've known you for so long, Jim Wood, and of course, the women that I met when I first decided to run for city council, because it was not something that I grew up believing that I wanted to do. And that's Diane Nygaard, Nadine Scott, Sherry Mackin, Carolyn Kramer, Shelley Carone, who recently left us. Peggy Malik also has, has gone. More recently, Jane Marshall, Linda Slater, Leslie Davies, Lisa Hamilton, Mr. Roberto Negrete, who I just met and who walked 80 miles for me. It's amazing, in his, in his late 70s. We have, we have so much that we have to do in our community. Yes, we have these, these, these challenges of COVID, and we have, we're hurting. Our businesses are hurting, our families are hurting because they're not being able to go to work. And we are going to have to work together to get through this very, very critical time. The bottom line is that Oceanside is at a very critical time. We have the lowest jobs-to-residence ratio in the whole county. We need to expand our economic base. We cannot be economically, environmentally sustainable unless we do. When you think about all the issues, all the problems that we have in Oceanside, it's about needing a larger economy. It is time for us, really time for us, to move away from the idea that developers should decide our future. It is time for us, Oceansiders, to decide our future. We are in the process of updating our general plan for the first time in many years. We are at build-out. We have very precious little open space left. Open space in, in parks that even now, we are, we have calls and calls asking for more, more recreational opportunities for our families. So I believe that we can do this and we must do this together. I look forward to working with my colleagues. I have the honor to be, to know just about every mayor that we have in the county. I have had a relationship with a lot of the electeds, and I feel very, very, number one, blessed to be in this possession, in this position now, and blessed that I, that we are going to be able to do this, not just within our city, but within our region. So thank you to everyone that helped. I, I dedicated this to my parents, but you know, it was my immediate, you know, my, my brother, Tony, Angie, my wonderful, talented nephew, David, who was the face of my campaign, turned something that I would do into something like, looked very professional. And to all of my family, Nancy, Rose, Aunt Rosemary, everyone, everyone that helped me, that has watched over me, and that has really been my teacher this entire time. Thank you very much.
And now we can move on to item number four, an adoption of a resolution recognizing and honoring Jack Feller for 20 years as an elected council member for the city of
I will move adoption of that. I also want to thank Jack for his dedicated years of service and appreciate everything he's done for the city over the years, Jack.
I'll second that, and Jack has really, I've spent a lot of years with Jack, and he has been his family values and what he brings to the city and how much time he's dedicated to it, I really, from the bottom of my heart. Thank you, Jack, and I look forward to working with you more in the future.
I'd like to say a few words about Jack as well. He has been on the council as long as I have, 20 years. And I have to say that I've learned a lot from that experience, Jack. We have been sometimes on opposite sides, and I think sometimes we have really developed better legislation because of that, because we truly had a dialogue. And I want to thank you for your years of service. I know that you have taken a lot of time to serve this city and therefore didn't have a lot of time to be with your family, your wonderful, large family. And so now you are going to have that, and I know you're, you're going to, you know, probably call in every now and then to give us some advice about how we move forward. But thank you so much, Jack.
And, and Jack? Is this on? And Jack, you're not here, but we're going to make sure we get this to you. But we have a certificate of appreciation for you. It's signed by Peter and Deanna, and we're going to make sure that it gets to you. And just thank you for all your years of service here at the city. I'd like to say a couple of words. I've, I've sat next to you at every council meeting, and I think one thing that made the city council meetings bearable was your humor, and I'm certainly going to miss it. And I wish you the best, and thank you again for your years of service, and we're going to make sure that this gets to you as well. Thank you.
Jack, did you want to say a few words?
Oh, sure. I didn't know. Is it my turn?
Yeah, please.
Okay, thank you. Well, this is pretty bittersweet. Sorry I'm not there, but that's the way of this lifetime. We came, we came to Oceanside looking for a true home for the Fellers, and I'm positive we found it. I, I want to make everybody aware that this is a great city. I've lived in a lot of places in my short 72 years, and the last 33 have been right here. That's almost half of the, the places, half of my life in, in one place, and that's pretty amazing. I want to thank staff. They are from all the city managers we've had, as well as the, the city attorney, the couple of three that we've had. They have been the only people that we truly have any clout with, and I, I hope we retain what we have now, because we are on, on the point of the spear going up. Our staff citywide is fantastic. They go out of their way to help. They've made great progress in dealing with the community. The community itself is a beholden to the staff that treat them with respect and, and give them the full answers and the full transparency. So I, my hat's off to our staff, they're second to none. Most, probably most of all, I need to, to thank this family. We came here as five travelers from Northern California in 1987, and now we are 22 children later. There's three and a half great-grandchildren, 22 grandchildren, three and a half great-grandchildren, one on the way. And, and that makes a total, will make a total of 35 of us, all live in an Oceanside. So we, we have a stake here. I wanted a place where we could settle down, and this is, has been it. My family's means the world. Kind of a, a rough last year and a half with losing my 96-year-old dad and then my 95-year-old mother this, in September. So they were my big cheerleaders. I, I can't say enough about our, everybody's favorite redhead, Vicky Prosser, and her family and their commitment to our, our success on the third floor. She's, she was the go-to person. 15 years with her. It's, it's just like, well, it's actually like having a second wife, to speak bluntly, but it, it was definitely for my benefit that I took the time and hired her to help me navigate the, the upstairs, the, the needs that the community has. I, I want to, I can't thank her enough, she is so special. And Mary Azavito and her commitment to the community and, and her help with my affairs as far as the, the four, last four elections that I actually won. So this, this was a hard election. I kind of agree with Christopher that it should be a primary, but there should also probably be some rules about jumping from seat to seat for the next level. And so maybe that's something to consider as well. I do want to say we have many visionary people who are coming to Oceanside with their money, and I would say continue to help them with their visions, because only, but for them, we continue to progress. And, and you'd like to think you have a say over what people do with their land, but that's not the right way to think about it. And we have to let them vet their, their programs and try to guide them into our plan and let them spend their money. Otherwise, we won't survive. And I do, do want to thank all our past staff for all they've done, because what is so well-looked at now in, in Oceanside is our downtown and the, the developments of the certain parks that have made a huge difference, and, and you will make differences going forward. I want to congratulate the winners. They, they fought good fights. The only one that, I think Victor and, and, and Zebra are the only ones that won by a majority. And, and that's probably what we need to work toward, is finding that so, that not, somebody who's, who wins is not winning by, with 20 or 30% of the, the voters. Congratulations to all of them. I do want to just say one thing, that children mean the most to a community. And I think seniors, of which I'm plenty willing to say I'm one, we take second seat all the way down the line as far as children go for me. And so at any cause, stay, stay the course for our children. Don't, don't adjust our, our police. They know what they're doing. Give them the tools and, and the, the, the extra help they need to satisfy this community. We were tremendous during these last nine months, and I know it'll be great going forward. And I just pray every day for Oceanside to be a chosen city, that, that God would make this a chosen city. I thank you all for 20 years. Thank you.
Do we have any public comments on this item, besides the council?
No, we don't. But Peter was going to mention to Jack that you have one minute.
One minute?
Speak or forever.
I got the rest of my life, buddy.
Thanks, Jack. And, oh, and we have a motion and a second on this item?
Yes, please vote.
Jack, I'm assuming you're a yes vote? Oh, can you say that again, Jack?
No, he can't. He can't vote.
Oh, he can't vote?
I can't vote. Yeah.
All right. Motion approved, 4-0.
Thank you. Next item is Public Communications on City Council Matters. Off agenda, do we have any speakers?
We have no speakers.
Okay, thank you. Well, we still have the final blessing that we have by Captain Malvernun of the San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians. So please stand, and then we'll be adjourning after that. Till tomorrow.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you for asking.
That's always good. Miuyam, that's Hilo and Luceno. On behalf of the Salasray Band of Mission Indians, I would like to congratulate Esther as a, our new mayor and also the council people that's coming in. And all of us who acknowledge that the, this has been the home of the Luceno Indians for time out of mind, that's since the beginning of time and beyond, so, and we're still here. That's, that's important to know, that we have survived and, and look for our city to survive and our community to survive in a good way. So on that, I'd like to say a native prayer for us all, and I'm honored to do this, and thank you for asking. Oh, grandfather, we ask you for a healing of our own spirit and the health of all our community. We ask you to guide Esther and the council on the path of wisdom and give knowledge in a nurturing way to lead us through this time of COVID and tough times, bring us all together in a, in a better time in the near future. Thank you so much, and working together, we can get through this, I hope. Thank you.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned. The next regular scheduled meeting will be tomorrow, December 16th. Thank you.